Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's study session for the city of Casa Grande. This is January 19th, Tuesday, January 19th, and tonight we have on our agenda for the study session, a presentation and discussion related to the city's budget, kind of a budget recap. Mr. Range, you're going to kick this off?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to be covering the item. Trying to adjust this microphone with the new location of it. The mayor and council will likely remember that when we went through our budget retreat in May, we were at the very front end of this COVID-19 pandemic, and we had essentially recommended what I consider to be a two-phase approach to our fiscal year 21 budget. And I'm going to talk a little bit about the criteria and the philosophy that we actually designed our fiscal year 21 budget here in a second, but the promise made by staff is that we would come back to council at mid-year and give a bit of an update and talk specifically about what we were seeing in the data. And so, we're here to do that tonight. I will let the council know that it's not our goal to cover every fund like we normally would, or every operation like we normally would during our full-day budget retreat. This is just a recap, and so what I will be focusing on is really our general fund primarily, which is our largest fund, obviously, and more importantly, some of the more active funds. And so, I do want to start the message by telling the council that I believe tonight's meeting and presentation is very positive. Obviously, from a staff's perspective, we are terming this as cautiously optimistic as we get ready and prepare for our fiscal year 22 budget. It's hard to believe that we're already here and they're going to start preparing for that, and I'll conclude the presentation with a bit of an overview of really the next steps of that process. And so, just a refresher for everyone, you recall that when we went into the budget process in fiscal year 21, really our budget philosophy was maintaining our current levels of services. That was an expectation that was established by the mayor and council that we did not want to make what I would consider to be rash decisions at the front end of the pandemic, ultimately knowing that there would be some changes in what we may normally expand our revenue streams that we'd be receiving during the year as a result of the environment that we were living in or facing. But, and so, we, from a staff's perspective, developed our budgets maintaining our current levels of programmings and service and looking to make some level of reductions that ultimately would reflect the revenues that we were projecting at that time. We did, as the council will recall, reduce revenues in a number of key categories, primarily dealing with sales tax collections, and I'll talk a little more about that, but we always had a focus on our strategic plan, and the mayor and council will recall that in 2018 we went through that process, and we had just completed what I would consider to be a bit of a revision, adding a few more focus areas and some additional goals in our fiscal year 20 update. And so, staff continues to utilize that strategic planning document. It's a valuable tool to us as we develop the budget proposals and the recommendation for allocation of the resources. And again, as I've said, we would meet with the mayor and council mid-year, and really at that point in time, there was so much uncertainty that we were unclear as to whether or not we would be coming back before the mayor and council with proposed additional reductions and/or would have to evaluate if we would be utilizing the fund balance reserves that we've so diligently built over the years. The good news is, is that you'll see tonight that we are not recommending that to do that, in fact, we don't need to based on the data that we've been able to collect to this point. As we mentioned during the budget retreat in May, our fiscal year 20 revenues were one of the most productive years that we had been experiencing up to that point. And so, again, not really being uncertain of what the COVID-19 pandemic may hold, we established the strategies, and so, the overall thought is because of the lagging revenues that we have, most of our revenues are collected two months before we actually receive them, that we wanted to collect some, what I would consider to be some reliable data to make some good decisions from, and I'll talk a little more about that, particularly in the local sales tax here in just a second in one of our future slides. But, we modeled a slow first six months. We modeled that housing starts were down significantly, that they would be down slightly. We modeled commercial construction to be steady. We did anticipate that the hospitality sector, restaurant bars and hotels would be down, and we ultimately anticipated that our retail sales would potentially be down as well as a result of the COVID-19. Fortunately for us, what you're going to see is that very few of those things transpired. It's been a bit of an anomaly, and we somewhat joke at the executive leadership team about the fact that none of our crystal balls seem to work this year. I'm looking for a new one if I can find it at one of the thrift stores.
But in a good way, right, Larry?
That's right. And so, let's just jump right into the funds, and I've broken these down, as I mentioned before, by fund type. I think it's important for us to do that. When we originally made our proposal to the mayor and council, you'll recall that we essentially anticipated our revenue streams, but the lion's share of what we utilize in our general fund, as you can see, is driven by our local sales tax. Roughly 40% of our revenues that we collect in the city are driven by our local sales tax, with a second primary driver coming from our intergovernmental, which essentially is our state share revenues that we get based on population. And this particular slide essentially outlines where we're at. These numbers that I'm presenting to the mayor and council today are as of January the 5th. Understand that, again, because of the lag in some of these particular categories, you'll see that while we're reporting this data through January 5th, many of them are still lacking December's actual revenues that would have been generated that will be paid to us in February. But, as you can see, we had budgeted $5.3 million in state sales tax, and through January, we'd received $2.6 million, so roughly 51% of that revenue stream had been recognized at that point, and our state income tax, the budget was $7.5 million, with the actual revenues being roughly $3.5 million at 46%. That could, again, be due to a bit of the lag. I think the important message in this is that our state sales tax numbers are based on population, it's based on a formula and equation that is established through state statute, and really is based on what the state has recognized in their revenue streams the year prior. So, we felt while we had actually budgeted and projected numbers that were lower than what we had seen the year before, we felt like there was an opportunity for us to be somewhat accurate on these numbers, and you can see that we're pretty close in those budget projections for that particular category.
So Larry, the actual should be right around 50%?
Correct.
Okay.
That's correct. The local sales tax, again, as you know, dominates the lion revenue share, revenue stream of our general fund revenues. We had actually budgeted 21.3 million, almost $21.4 million, and through January 5th, again, which is through revenues that we had collected through November, we had actually received $11,737,000, or 55%. There's really, I guess, just, and I've got a specific slide that I want to talk about on these local sales tax. I think the important element of this, or what we have seen through the first six months of the year, is that we are, number one, that those categories that we anticipated would be down because of the pandemic. We've only seen probably one in accommodations that really met our expectations, but the upswing that we're recognizing are really driven on three specific categories in our local sales tax. The first is construction. Obviously, construction has continued to really exceed what our expectations were through the first half of the year, and quite candidly, we're anticipating that we're going to see the same the second half based on the data and the information that we've got from permits, those types of things. We're anticipating that we'll continue to see growth in that category, remembering that we typically assign our construction sales, our construction revenues that we generate to one-time expenditures, but our construction and our fees and various, fees and revenues that we collect for one-time revenues, our construction-based, like permits and the like, are really trending much greater than what we had anticipated.
Larry, before you get off this, too, where are the online sales tax?
It's my number-two category, mayor, in this, of the three. The second is our online sales, and I don't have a specific slide, but I have the data in front of me.
Is it in these numbers at all?
It is included in the local sales tax number.
Okay, thank you.
And so, the second component, while we had taken what I consider to be a very conservative approach on online sales, simply because we're in the early stages of the various lawsuits that have resulted and that are the driving force behind these sales tax, I can tell you that through the year, our online sales tax has been roughly $300,000. Let me make sure I'm reading that correctly. Well, and I'm looking, perhaps I brought the wrong report. I believe that they've been roughly $300,000 for the year. The third element in the local sales tax that I think has been a bit surprising to us from the projections that we made are in our retail sales, and they have definitely exceeded the projections by a sizable amount, and ultimately, the conclusion that we've reached as we've done additional research in our retail sales tax is that during this COVID event, I think a number of people have elected to shop locally, essentially, rather than driving to the valley, and some of that loss that we typically would have seen in the years past, the majority of the individuals are staying local, and that is resulting in what I consider to be an increase in that particular category. But, quite honestly, as you look down the list, the one category that has seemed to be most impacted is the accommodations, is our hotels and motels, but the restaurants, the bars, they are holding very true to what we had estimated, and when you compare it to a year ago. And so, again, I think that generally those have been the three categories that have overperformed, if you will, during the last six months.
Matt has a question.
Yes.
That was one of my questions. I know we don't get specific business, but what categories were higher? You told switchings were lower.
Right.
So, we can kind of look at that. And also, it's interesting to hear the online sales wafer. I thought it'd be a bigger chunk than that, but it's not that big a part of our local sales tax, so that's encouraging.
Right.
At least we're getting, capturing some of that.
We are capturing some of that, and quite frankly, what we're recognizing is we're seeing more and more growth as a result of that. From month to month, we're seeing a bit of growth as a result of that. It's obviously been something that was difficult to project because we had never received it prior. I think, I shouldn't say never, but we were early in on the collection of that, and so the numbers that we had generated last year were somewhat small comparatively to what we're seeing this year.
And what were our biggest categories? Was there any big jumps or just more steady on everything else?
The construction elements, and there's a variety of categories. I think there's three or four different categories for construction has seen the biggest jump. Our retail sales have seen the second, with the online sales being the third.
Construction is the most prolific I've seen of.
Yes.
It's amazing. One of the things I just wanted to say is I think it really speaks well for our community, like with the restaurants and the takeouts, that there's a lot of loyalty to the long-term places, and I know a lot of them were able to stay in business, and I think a good amount of were able to make money doing it, so. And people shopping in our community is good. One of the things I heard from my wife and my daughter is they went to the grocery store and there's nothing there, that they've been cleaned out on lots of the different things. So, I don't know why that's happening, but do you?
I could speculate. Is there inauguration tomorrow?
What's that? Yeah. Okay.
Just saying.
You know, interestingly.
It's like there's a impending storm coming.
Getting ready for the storm, I guess. I don't know.
Interestingly enough, what we have seen in the retail category, when you dial into the specific data, is that there have been a number of what we would consider to be large purchases over the last six months, at least comparatively to the year before, and as I pointed out, we were having a record year in fiscal year 20, and so, again, it speaks a little bit to the fact that the disposable income that individuals have had, they've spent locally in our community.
You know, you see a lot of automobile, new automobiles on the streets, too. I don't know.
Right.
Hopefully, they're buying them in town.
And you know, maybe some of those stimulus checks, you know, people are buying those items. But Larry, I have a question on the online sales.
Yes.
I know you kind of gave an estimate of where it is, but can you kind of recap where we are on it? I mean, is it just a percentage we're getting at this point, or is it full? How is it allocated? It's not the state share revenues, is it? I mean, is it just online?
No. When an individual purchases something online, the respective vendor should be paying us our sales tax.
Okay, so it's clear as that? I mean, that's what it is? Okay. I just wanted to verify that.
At one point in time, early on in this process, when the lawsuits first began, they were distributing the online sales based on some population figure because that was the only thing they had, as all of these various retailers were getting their systems set up.
Okay.
And quite candidly, I will tell you that it's likely that we're only capturing a portion of what we should be in these categories still today, and it's likely something that needs to get more sophisticated in time. And I do think, because we've tested that on a couple of purchases that we've made from the organization, just individuals that we trust in the organization, when they go on, we ask them if they've bought something online to look at the sales tax. And so, it's likely, at least from my perspective, one of those scenarios that the various retailers will spend some time catching up on, because we still see that there's retailers that haven't started collecting tax at all. And so, I anticipate that it's going to be something that will slowly improve over the next several years.
Thank you.
Now, you know, obviously, the downside to that is that, and we deal with it, and I know the council has heard staff talk about this in the past, it's fantastic that the city's receiving some level of revenue stream as a result of these purchases that are being made online, but there will be, there will likely be a point, if more and more of the purchases are continued to be made online, that these retailers will have what I consider to be physical facilities in the community, will begin to evaluate if it's more cost-effective for them to essentially begin to move out of the brick-and-mortar establishments and simply move online. So, you know, again, it's a positive thing that we're beginning to collect the sales tax, but there are ramifications that we likely will continue to see, because I know a lot of these bigger retailers, these bigger box retailers, are having to evaluate that on a regular basis. The next taxing category, and I just list this one, it's pretty self-explanatory, is our property taxes. As you can see, we had budgeted 4.4 million, but we've received roughly 2.2 through this point, so 50%, so we're right on target for that. And then, lastly, I point this out simply to tie into the discussion I've had about construction. Our development center has been taxed this year with a number of projects that we have coming in, both from the commercial, the industrial, as well as the residential front. We're processing more development center types of applications than we have in some time now, and so, through January, we were already at 86%. We were having a discussion this morning at our executive leadership team. Our planning director, Paul Tyce, is pretty good with his crystal ball about estimating where things are going to land within his revenue streams, and he anticipates that we could likely double what we had budgeted in this particular category for the upcoming year. And again, and you'll see, I'll talk a little bit here just in a bit about expenditures. The key element of that is that it gives us what I consider to be the surplus that we'll generate in fiscal year 21, revenues over expenditures, that will give us, again, some flexibility if this pandemic continues into the future, which, quite frankly, I'm anticipating that we're going to see some level of ramifications that will likely go into the next fiscal year. It gives us a bit of flexibility to, and surplus to actually roll into the next year. Are there any questions on these major revenue streams for the general fund? If not, let me just speak just very briefly, and this is a bit of an overview of all of our funds. It's a slide that we used during the budget retreat. It really just talks specifically about fund by fund and the various categories, and as you can see, our general fund, the primary expenditure in the general fund is obviously personnel, because the majority of our services require the personnel to achieve that, and compared in comparison to the debt service and the capital improvement projects where they're 100% allocated to either debt service or the CIP projects that we're actually fulfilling for the year. This particular slide, again, was used at our budget retreat. It just gives a bit of, it captures of our total general fund budget, where the money's being allocated by the various categories. As you can see, 23% is personnel, capital and debt is 55%, and this is actually all funds, not just the general fund. This particular slide was an attempt to give the mayor and council, again, a bit of an overview of where the expenditures are allocated by department, and really, there should be no surprises of where our dollars are allocated from the expense perspective. I do have a slide coming right behind this that actually shows what's been expended for the year, just again, as a graphic example of ultimately, to bring us to this slide. We had budgeted $59 million in expenditures in our general fund for this particular fiscal year. As of January 5th, we had expended roughly $18.5 million, or 31%. So, it speaks again to what I consider to be the approach that our various department directors have used, to be very cautious in our spending, and I think the primary driver behind that is that the message that was sent early on in the fiscal year, that if we find ourselves in January having to make budget reductions, you need to be, you need to prepare yourself to be able to do so. And I'm certainly not advocating that we're going to, you know, bring out the wallets tomorrow and begin to spend aggressively, but again, I think that overall, what it does is it speaks to that cautious optimism. It's going to give us what I consider to be some advantages when we move into fiscal year 22, in an effort to achieve the goals and objectives that the mayor and council have established.
Larry?
Yes.
And there's no CIP in this. This is just general fund, right?
This is just general fund, yes. Yep. So, here's, again, just a couple of the major funds, and I do want to note that when I put this slide together, I was really trying to compare revenues and expenditures, but as I was developing it, I thought that there might be some confusion to council, and so I did add a bit of a footnote on this particular document for the council to understand that I'm not accounting for any fund balance that would have been utilized for the fiscal year. I'm not accounting for any transfers that would have come into the fund, or I'm simply covering the actual revenue stream from the primary sources that we've received. And so, as you can see, the HERF fund, we had budgeted it roughly $6 million, and we've collected 3.3, so we're at 57% of collections there. While that is good for us, it ultimately, I think the council recognizes that in the long run, our HERF funds is something that we are going to have to really evaluate and simply come up with some solutions and options for bringing a new revenue stream to this particular fund, because the expenditures will far outpace the revenues that are being projected for a variety of reasons, but it speaks to, if you see the difference between the revenues and the expenditures in HERF, there's a heavy emphasis on the fund balance that we're using in order to achieve the projects that we've put into the budget this year. In sanitation, you'll see that we had budgeted $7.3 million in revenue. This is a bit lower than what we had anticipated, and so, we're looking into this particular number. We've collected roughly 2.4 million, or 35%, and the expenditures, which is a good thing, we had budgeted 10 million and spent 2.1 million, so a use of about 21%.
Some of that, people not paying their bills?
Mayor, we actually bill on an accrual basis, so this is actually revenues that we're, this is revenue that we've billed for, not necessarily collected.
Okay, okay.
On the wastewater revenue, you'll see that we had budgeted 11.7 million. We've collected four, or 34%. On the wastewater expenditure, we had budgeted 14 million and expended 2.6 for 18%. And the golf course, I just put this in because it is an enterprise fund. We had budgeted 1.4 million, and we've actually collected 356,000, or 25%. I wouldn't be alarmed by that number because our bigger months at the golf course actually start about the time that we're making this reporting, and we've really seen, well, we've seen two things in the golf course. First and foremost is in November, when we typically would have had our big revenues for annual passes that we would have sold, there were a number of individuals that elected not to buy the annual pass. Again, my assumption is because of the uncertainty of their ability to essentially maximize the use of that. But if you look, but what we're beginning to recognize from that point is that our daily sales rounds are actually exceeding what they have in the past, which at the end of the day will result in more revenues than what we had anticipated. And then, the expenditures of 1.7 is what we had budgeted, but actually collected 483,000, so 27%. So, again, I know that that particular fund looks like we're outpacing the revenue stream, but that's very typical when you come through the summer months because of the heavy emphasis on the revenue side during this time of the year. Yes, Mr. Powell?
The COVID, it would seem to me, would really affect golf. Play, the play of golf, I don't know how many, if that restricted it. Has it really?
I think that what we have seen, I shouldn't say I think, I know that what we have seen is that our rounds played did see a bit of a fall-off early on. We obviously came through the summer months, which is typically slower anyhow. However, we are finding that we are having, we've made some, we've implemented some protocols at the golf course that change how we handle the number of rounds, how we manage that, but we are anticipating that we'll see the rounds exceed the rounds we had played last year, even though we're not anticipating the winter visitor, winter visitor groups that we've had in the past. We've had the closure of a couple of golf courses, which normally is going to push people to those that are open.
Are we changing like the golf cart? Are we changing like the golf cart policy? Are there still two people in the golf carts, or are they doing individual carts?
If you live, it's still the same. If you live with the person, you can ride in the cart. It's, it's up, and it's up to the individuals too, they decide. If they're hang, if it's, if they're in their circle, then you'll see them occasionally riding together. But you still see one in a cart.
Right.
Okay.
Right. I'm, I'm, I've, I've added these slides just as a refresher to the mayor and council, but I'm not going to go into a lot of depth in our capital improvement projects for the year. The council is aware of the fact that we budgeted nearly $60 million in capital projects. We are, we are making advancements in each of those projects. This kind of breaks it down by department, this slide does. And then the next slide actually breaks it down by funding source of how we're going to fund those. But I know that the mayor and council gets to consider practically every expenditure that is a capital project, so you know, based on the number of actions that you've taken on, on some of the large ticket items, that those are in the, in the works. My plan is to actually give the mayor and council an update in the, within the next 30 to 45 days, what I would consider to be a status update on each of those projects. One of the reasons why I wanted to include this in the budget, or in this particular recap, is to advise the mayor and council that we, we, as a staff, I had made a decision to ultimately forego what we would consider to be our normal capital improvement process, where departments are making, are making requests in our five-year plan. Those are being evaluated, and we're bringing those back to the mayor and council. And really, the primary driver to that is that early on in the fiscal year, we had somewhat suspended some of the, when I say suspended, we had deferred moving some of these projects forward until we could get a better lay of the land of how the revenue streams were coming in. So there was a bit of a delay. And my recommendation to council is to simply use the list that we've already assembled, that we've already got in place for the upcoming fiscal year 22 budget, and fund those projects that have been on the list prior, unless we have an emergency situation or a project that the mayor and council has listed as a goal that we, and, and so rather than going through and evaluating hundreds of projects, let's just get the ones that have been on the list done. And so that's really going to be the strategy for this upcoming fiscal year. And again, I think the council will have a better picture of that when we, when we put together what I consider to be the overview of our CIP. And you'll likely even recognize how, the, the reason why the decision was made when you get, when we get into the fiscal year 22 budget and you see the list from there. We've got a number of projects that are on the list that I know all of you want to get done, that we as staff feel need to be done. And just adding items to the list for the sake of adding items to the list sometimes is not, is fruitful as, as you would expect. And so, so that is the strategy for the upcoming year. The second thing is, is as I said early on, with the philosophy being cautiously optimistic, we're still uncertain about what types of long-term impacts this COVID pandemic may have. And while we are reporting the numbers through January, what I'd say November through January, we are still uncertain about the, what I would consider to be the ramifications or the impacts that we're going to recognize by the lack of winter visitors coming to, to town. Our biggest, most productive revenue months on the sales tax side specifically are December, January, and February. And so we do not have that data yet. And so while we've, while to this point, it's been very productive and very positive, again, you're, you're probably seeing the cautiousness in Larry Raines, the, the fact that I'm risk adverse. We're, we're, we're simply continuing what I consider to be the implementation of strategies that walks very slowly through this to ensure that we don't over-leverage where we're at as an organization. Any questions on the capital items?
The, I, I just wanted to, Kevin's got his head down praying, I won't call on him, but he's just raised it back up. Kevin, I, on the HERF, I just wanted to congratulate you. We, our streets, the south side especially, but a lot of places around town you drive and, and it just, I'm really impressed.
Yes.
Really done a job.
And, and Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Powell, if I can just build on that a bit, I, I think that we all, again, as I had mentioned prior, we all know that it's costing more money to, to manage our transportation infrastructure. We're seeing, you know, Kevin, I think Kevin would tell you if he stood up to the podium now that we could use more money in our maintenance, we could use more money in some of these capital, these capital projects. The reality of it is that, that it appears that we're going to have to evaluate other, other revenue options if we're going to try to make things any better than they are. With that being said, and to Councilmember's, Councilmember Powell's point, I truly believe that when you evaluate our index comparatively to cities our size, we have some of the better roads in town. And, and when you drive into other communities, you see really how, what I would consider to be difficult or, or challenged some of those municipalities are trying to get on the other side of this. And I, I think it's a, it's a result of the council's policy and, and Kevin and his team's desire to, to really try to build what I consider to be a broad-based maintenance program. There, there's still going to be individuals that'll tell you that we need road, roads improved. And I agree with that. What, we're tackling it with the resources that we have.
Well, it just, it just raised the level of, of how people view the south side now. And they, it's not all the potholes and that, it's a brand-new road. It's, it's really impressive.
Absolutely, and, you know, we had completed the Rancho Grande project the year before that. And, and so I, you know, I, again, I just think that, with that being said, I want the council to recognize when we get into fiscal year 22, we've used, we've utilized the fair amount of our fund balance to, to achieve these things. And so, and, and, and as the council is fully aware, we have some demands with some of the new growth that's, that's, that's being, that's really pressuring staff today to come up with some alternatives. We're working on a variety of those. I do, I do appreciate the shift in the philosophy and the methodology for our development impact fees, because you're going to see that we can use some of those in particularly in these areas of internal streets where we're trying to expand, expand roadways instead of having the, you know, the roads that go from a single lane to a double lane. We're, we're putting together a plan to, to make some improvements, what I'd consider to be on the, in the interior of our, of our community. But, but ultimately, it's something that we, we need to, we need to put together more of a longer-range plan and have some candid dialogue with council about options to, to essentially fund those projects.
At this point in time, do we have any major infrastructure that we're not aware of, that we're planning to do this year? Or is, is roads the main thing, or?
As, as far as, as far as the 58, the $60 million, they're, the, the, the largest project in this, in this particular, these categories is the Thornton Road widening that, that, that we're working cooperatively with Pinellas County to widen from Hila Ben Highway to Interstate 8. You know, obviously, we've got it budgeted this year. We, we are anxiously awaiting the results of the appeal and the decision that'll be made out of the courts on that particular tax, because the county has not only an obligation from a partnership perspective to pave their share of that roadway, but, but that, we, we are heavily reliant on, on the half-cent sales tax that is, that is currently being collected by the county to fund that, to fund that roadway. But outside of that, Mr. Powell, I will tell you that we, we do have, we do have other projects that were actually, that really are, that span all of our funds. You know, from fuel tanks at the airport to, I know that we have, we have some, some, some park work that's being done. And, and, and again, I, I did not bring the entire list with me. It'll be something that I report to the mayor and council on in the future. But, but we, if, if you go back to this slide, you'll see that, that a number of our departments have some level of capital projects that we've, that we're, we've either started or we're in the middle of and, and/or that will be coming back to the mayor and council to complete before the end of the year. And so before I get into the calendar, again, I just want to reemphasize that from staff's perspective, we've, we believe, we're cautiously optimistic. I do believe that this report is, is, is a lot more positive than I thought it was going to be when we, when we met last May and when we asked council to approve the budget in July. We, we are going to continue, as we have the last several months, at, with evaluating these numbers month by month to month. And from a timing perspective, I think it's going to work out very nicely, because obviously, my task is to bring a balanced budget to the mayor and council. So we are in the process, as we speak, and you'll hear a little more about that, of, of projecting our revenue stream for next fiscal year. And, and, and so ultimately, we'll be able to keep a close eye on that. And I can update the mayor and council if we see any types of deviation from the message I'm sending today. But ultimately, knowing that come May of, of 2021, we're going to be standing before council again in our budget retreat, articulating those numbers. And we are not anticipating much slowdown on the, on the construction side of things. We, Paul Tyce believes that we'll, we'll likely find ourselves in a bit of a rhythm the next couple of years, based on the amount of inquiries and the amount of building activity that's going on in Casa Grande, that we'll see roughly 1,000 new single-family home permits for the next couple of years. We are working as many economic development projects that would bring new jobs and capital infrastructure and capital investment to the community, probably more than we have in, in, I shouldn't say a number of years, but certainly the most that we've seen in any activity in the 21 years that I've been here. And, and, and I, and I just, I think there's a number of individuals that are very high, from the development community, that are very high on Casa Grande right now. And, and, and I, I believe that you'll begin to see a synergy that begins that new houses, the result of new houses are coming as a result of the jobs that we're bringing. And you'll see some of the commercial that come behind that, you know, as we're going through the pandemic. So, Mr. Mayor, before I get into the calendar, I, I guess I would pause and answer any other questions that the council may have, just generally about the budget.
Well, I just wonder if you sleep better now?
No.
You know, this is, it's kind of unexpected, and it's really, really makes, I think, everybody, you're very happy.
Yeah. Well, I, as you look back, it is, I know that we missed the mark on a number of our projections on the revenue side from May. But I do think that the strategy to break this up into a two-year, into a multi-year type of approach versus moving into June and July with what I would consider to be major reductions in our service level was the right thing to do. So I think the strategy to, to break it up was, was a very productive one.
Yeah, commendable to you, Larry, and your staff, so thank you for what you do.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'd just like to think back when you guys gave us the presentations, that 2020 with clear vision, right? And how could we have seen any of this stuff? But the big things that I got out of it, which I like, and our philosophy has always been as a city, is the one-time revenue for the one-time expenses, which is important. So you can keep with that. And, and another neat thing from this is that you see the small businesses in town, mine included, when you get hit with something like that, you have to pivot and you have to change. And most of them have adjusted and done a great job of it. And, and judging by sales tax figures, have been successful. And, and shows how important the shopping local part of this is, you know? Because that's what's bolstered, bolstered our economy here. It's going to be interesting, because the Canadians didn't come back this year, which is a big part of our, you know, our December, January, February numbers, so we'll see. But I, I appreciate yours and your staff's. Yeah, your staff's physical conservatism and, and, you know, the cautious optimism, Larry, as you always put it, I think that's important and what keeps us going in a positive direction.
I think it also might speak to, to how much leakage we might have been having and not realized.
Right.
Because now people stayed in town, and, and I think that leakage is a little bigger than we, we thought it was.
And just how much we, we ate in our own homes. And, you know, you may have gone out to dinner more and, you know, but now, I mean, we, I cook every night now.
Yeah, yeah, that's true. Anybody have any other questions or comments for Larry?
Mr. Mayor, let me make one clarification. I had indicated I was looking at the, at the wrong line. I was afraid I was going to do that on the online sales. I, I had mentioned that we had generated roughly 300. It's 90, roughly 95,000 this year on online sales.
Not 300?
Not 300, 95. So let me, Mr. Mayor, just moving to the budget calendar real, real quickly. And it's, it's the same, it's the same, what I consider to be scheduled, as the mayor and council has become familiar with these last couple of years. We, we have actually kicked off the budget process with our revenue review, and our department directors are in the process of beginning to develop their operational budgets and their capital budgets. We'll, we'll be doing that through March and April, when those will be due to, into, into the finance department's office who compiles those. And in April, we will be, the city manager's office will be meeting individually with the department directors as we essentially put together the, the balanced budget. We anticipate holding a mayor and council budget retreat in May. I will tell you that this may be the last year that we do the May retreat, not simply because we're going to try to escalate this budget calendar by a year, by a month, maybe even two, but by a month. And so our hopes are that we'll start this process in November next year with the capital improvement program, and that, that will be before council in April with, in our budget retreat, and that ultimately will lead to us adopting our final budget even before the end of the fiscal year, so we're, we're past that. Obviously, we have statutory requirements that we have to meet in regards to publishing, in regards to the, to the property taxes, our rate and fees and the like. But, but so, but this year, we are holding true with the calendar that we've used in the past. May, May retreat for the mayor and council, we'll be looking to set that here in the next month or so, so that everybody can get it on your calendars. In June, we'll be looking to adopt the tentative budget and do our necessarily posting, our necessary state-required postings. And then in July, which is usually in the first meeting, we'll be asking the, the mayor and council to adopt the final budget and then, and then the property tax. And I do have another slide that just kind of outlines the property tax levy and, and how we go about the, the process through that. But typically, what we've done is adopt our, our property tax levy in August. We have to have it to the county by the third Monday, I believe, of, of August. And so this, this timetable will reflect that. So a very similar timetable that we've used the last two years, maybe three now. But just cautioning the council that next year, we'd like to accelerate that just briefly. And, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that concludes the update.
Thank you, Larry.
I think we always ought to have our city manager be a finance background.
It's always nice.
Yep.
Who knows the difference between a balance sheet and a?
You've been there.
All right, does anybody have any questions or comments?
No, good job.
Yeah, nice job, Larry, thank you, to you and staff. Thanks for all the work I know that this requires, so appreciate it. All right, no other comments, then we'll stand adjourned until 7 o'clock.